Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November 2022 Cook County Commission on Social Innovation meeting. We will call the meeting to order and then we'll ask Talia if she can please call to see if we can establish quorum. I think we're a few members short, but we'll start noting the members and we'll proceed with the agenda as a few other members join us. Talia?
Hey, hello, everyone. Okay, to start with attendance, Chair Anaya.
Present.
Vice Chair Lane.
President, thank you.
Commissioner Agüepe. Mayor Osberry. Commissioner Alston. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Brutus. Commissioner Calviento.
Present.
Commissioner Cooley.
Present.
Ex-officio Criticos. Commissioner de Laurentis. Commissioner Dubois.
Here.
Commissioner Espinosa. Commissioner Flores. Let me let Harry in. Commissioner Freeman. Comis- other person Haddon. Superintendent Killen.
Present.
Commissioner Males.
Good day, everyone, present.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Raymer.
Present.
Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Schizer. Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Alright, thank you.
I'm not sure if we noted Harry, but he did join us. So I'll make sure that the minutes reflect that he is present. Okay, so we will, we are going to defer the approval of the minutes because I believe an outdated version was sent out to folks. So there is, there are some updates that will need to be corrected in the minutes. So we are going to table and defer the minutes until the next meeting. Therefore, you know, we can approve the correct and most updated minutes, but before we move on to just general updates, I'll ask if there were any public testimony from anybody that needed to submit public testimony. Talia, did we have any edits to the agenda or any public testimony for today?
No, we didn't have any for today.
Thank you. So I guess we'll go into general updates. I'll do a very quick update and we'll definitely have, you know, at the next meeting, a little bit more information, but on my end, for the Cook County Board of Commissioners, we are in the budget process. So we have begun, last week, we did our departmental budget hearings, and I just wanted to make sure that this commission was updated on where our budget is at, at the county and some of the initiatives that we're looking into. I know a few of them might be of interest to the commission and I'd be, again, more than happy to discuss this a little further at the upcoming meeting. In December, I know we're planning to do one potentially in person. It would be a working meeting. But just to give you all an update, the budget that has been proposed has been an $8.75 billion budget. And this includes some of the capital and grant funds that will be available. It is the smallest gap under President Prokawinkle. And I think it's a, the gap is about $18.2 million. Dollars. So the general operating budget that is excluding capital benefits and debt payments is $7.23 billion. For a little over $4 billion, which are in the public health sector. 1.54 for the public safety. And then after that, you know, there's economic development and some other initiatives. I think the biggest portion of the budget, I think it's a sort of 78,000 is of our operating budget is going to be going into the public health and public safety accounts. So just some general captions of some of the initiatives that we're looking into. So part of the president's priorities and policy have really gone into six buckets. Number one is healthy communities. So there, we're looking at the annual county care membership of 391,000, which is something that we're expecting might, you know, decrease. This is important because it is the biggest revenue bucket that we do receive in the county and it, you know, helps pay for some of our initiatives. Within the vital communities, we're seeing a $50 million allotment for equity fund investments under safe and thriving communities, a $24 million in grants to support the equity fund. But also just some of the other initiatives that we're, we're going to be seeing along the way in public safety. And that really also has to do with some of the violence prevention initiatives. Under sustainable communities, we are seeing that, you know, we were trying to make investments into becoming a zero admission county. So we've set goals internally and I know that there's going to be some initial conversations as part of the new, new year and the new terms. And then under smart communities, there is an investment of $8.5 million in infrastructure and just generally in the different commissioner districts. And then I know, you know, we're very proud as this budget comes forward that we have seen some increase in some of the ratings that we've been receiving. So Moody has us as at a A8. Two, we have S and P has us at an A plus. And then Fitch has us as an AA minus. So we're really excited about just the general initiatives that we're looking at. I know some of you all have been a part, and we made announcements at the last meeting regarding guaranteed income, the Justice Advisory Council initiatives around violence prevention. So we're really excited that a lot of these are moving forward and that we're setting a really good foot forward. So that even beyond ARPA funding, that we can do initiatives that are impactful and innovative in Cook County. So that's just a really quick, brief update in general regarding the county. And, you know, we are going to be amendments to the budget are, the last day is tomorrow, but we're going to be voting on a final budget on November 17th. The other thing that I wanted to make sure to make an announcement on is this is the, my last social innovation committee as of my first, in my first term. Because come December 5th, a whole, you know, commissioners get inaugurated. So we're excited to see, you know, what the second term brings. So we are going to continue having the social innovation committees. It looks like I will potentially continue to be able to serve on this commission. So I'm excited about that and we will make sure to keep you all updated on any other updates. And I will turn it over to our vice chair, Lane, if he has any updates on his end.
I do, and Commissioner and I wanted to congratulate you on the significant progress the board has made in terms of credit rating. It's a reflection of wonderful stewardship and responsibility. And thank you for your leadership in this area and others. So thanks for that. I have two announcements. One, by way of reminder, for the December meeting of the commission, we're going to be departing from our typical pattern in that we will not have an expert witness providing testimony, but rather we will have each of the working groups make a comprehensive presentation on their efforts to develop actionable social policy recommendations that might become ordinances or policies with teeth in them. So my expectation is that we will be collectively workshopping those ideas, taking the work of the working groups and now exposing that work to the commission at large so we can move forward with actual outcomes. So that leads to two different recommendations. One, the chairs of the respective working groups are encouraged to meet with your groups in a substantive fashion between now and the next meeting and see that we can have the best possible product as a starting point for the deliberations of the commission as a whole. And two, it's important that everybody participate in the December meeting because it will lead to the results that we've all been working so hard to accomplish. It will also find its way into the annual report that the commission is obliged to publish each year. And I want to make sure that that report evidences the the hard work and the accomplishments and the efforts and the results of the commission over the course of the past year. So thank you for that. The second announcement is kind of a point of personal privilege. I happen to be the chair and president of a nonprofit called Social Enterprise Chicago, which convenes, collaborates and catalyzes social enterprises in the Chicago region. Market-based strategies to drive social change. And we are going to be having our one week hence, at five o'clock next Thursday at the Union League Club. I will be having a fireside chat with former Governor Quinn, who was responsible, among other things, for having signed the L3C legislation. I drafted the Benefit Corporation legislation. The State's First Pay for Success Initiative. Of the Governor's Task Force and Social Innovation and Entrepreneurship. I talk about Illinois as the Delaware of social enterprise and much of it started during his administration. So I would encourage all of you, not only present as a commissioner, but any members of the public who are listening to us today, watching us today. Please, we'd love to have you join us. There will be opportunities to talk with the governor and have beverage and food and network with others who are like-minded. And you can either participate in person, as I hope you will, or virtually. And if you want to get the specifics, you'll find it on my Facebook page. Or alternatively, send me an email and I'll be happy to, to send you a link to the event. And I would hope to see many of the commissioners and many members of the public who are participating in this meeting to, to be present and share their excitement and enthusiasm for the social enterprise community that we are seeking to celebrate next week. So thanks for that and thanks for allowing me the opportunity to, to talk about that a little bit. And Madam Chair, if it's comfortable for you, I think that everybody is eager to hear our, our guest and his actionable policy recommendations. So might I move right into that?
Please.
Well, thank you.
Well, actually, Vice Chair, I do see Kristi de Laurentis had her hand up. Was this in regards to any of the announcements, Kristi? Oh, you're muted, sorry.
Thanks. Thanks for opportunity to pose a question to you, Vice Chair Lane. I wanted to just get a sense from you. Are you, when you're interested in, or when you're, when, when the annual reports get filed, how are we supposed to submit information that we think has been advanced through the efforts of this committee? Just provide you a summary, a bullet list? What's, what's the vehicle?
Yeah, well, Chair and I and I will probably be doing the, the heavy lifting on that report. So to the extent you can provide either of us any substantive information you'd like to see included in the report, one, that'll help us out and two, we'll make sure that it gets in the report. So thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to make sure that, I think this, this body has been instrumental in the food desert passage in my own, you know, my organization, South suburban, you know, Southland Reactivation Act legislation and some other initiatives. So I'll be happy to provide that to you, just a couple of summaries and you can do with it what you will. Thank you.
Very much appreciate that. Thank you for that. Okay, now on to Professor Durlough. It's, it's really a treat to have Stephen Durlough with us this afternoon. He is the Staines Professor at the Harris School of Public Policy in Chicago. Staines is kind of an iconic name in social impact circles. Not only Harrison Staines, Staines Family Foundation, but as you may know, Heather Staines, who recently retired from the Senate, was in fact the primary sponsor of the L3C legislation. She also rose to become the Chair of the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. So his, his professorship, recognizing his family's contribution, says a lot about him and his efforts and contributions to the field. But he also now fairly recently became the Director of the Stone Center for Research on Wealth Inequality and Mobility, which really is a reflection of his research and writings on inequality, intergenerational mobility, discrimination, economic growth. Areas that are all of great concern to each of us and within the sweet spot of our work, as it happens. And today he's going to be offering actionable policy recommendations, looking at the socioeconomic isolation of African-American communities and particularly and how policies might look at persistent disadvantage and how that might be overcome through such efforts as intensive education, all the way up through, including zoning practices and policies. So Stephen, thanks so much for joining us. The floor is yours and we're delighted to have you.
No, thank you. It's an honor to, to, to speak to you. I'm a little worried that what I have to say may not be actionable, but what I hope will be useful is I can give you some perspective from the contemporary research and inequality and how would, one would think about various policies to address social injustices. Let me also start by saying a lot of my thinking on this has been influenced by trying to be thinking about issues of reparations. And I want to mention a former PhD student at Chicago, David McMillan, who is now at Emory University, who's had a deep impact on my thinking. So if I say this is my idea, in many ways, it's our ideas and it's something we're actively writing, writing on. So with those caveats indicate what I think might be useful ways to think about some of the policies and then I'll try to give some specifics. I, I think that if one sort of asks about the evolution of research on inequality, or let's say academic thinking and inequality. You know, Chicago's always been at the forefront of it, but it was traditionally kind of a, you know, a markets-driven and individual education, family-specific vision of what determines inequality dynamics. I think that modern research identifies a few phenomena to think about and a slightly different language to think about in the sorts of policies that that you're making decisions about with reference to, to the allocation of resources. So what do I mean by that? I guess the first thing to say is that in thinking about the ethics of inequality, I think there's, there's really two ideas that have become fundamental in the way that that normative considerations are done. And they're going to both sound obvious, but they have deep implications. The first one is to argue that the governments should try to rectify inequalities that people aren't responsible for. And so the obvious examples of that would be the accident of birth. If somebody has rich parents versus poor parents, that induces an what is responsible for. Obviously, any sorts of discrimination are the morally easiest examples of egregious violations of that principle. The second idea would be that people should, it's going to, again, sound banal, people should get what they deserve. But what does that mean operationally? It means that if two people work equally hard in school, their opportunities for college should, should reflect that and not, again, you know, factors that are not rewarding them for for the things we think that generate the notion of desert. I mentioned that because I think that that's at least one of the templates to run policies through. In other words, say that we have objectionable forms of inequality. And do the policies directly, directly affect these objectionable forms? Now, it's not really my place to talk to you, you all about political feasibility, but I think in terms of creating political, you know, will to do these things, emphasizing these ethical considerations has to be paramount. The second thing that I would say is that in thinking about inequality, it's very important to actually think about dynamics. Now, again, that sounds obvious, but I have a specific thing I wanted to say there, which is that a lot of the contemporary focus on inequality is asking about various types of persistent inequality. And so intergenerational mobility is one of the conventional ways to think about things. And that is, you asked, to what extent is an adult's outcomes predictable, knowing the socioeconomic status of their parents? And so, you know, obviously more mobile societies are those, we should get less predictability. And I put that on the table because as I see contemporary studies of inequality and particular focuses on black, white inequality, if there's two ideas or two phenomena that have to be thought about very hard. The first is the presence of bottlenecks in socioeconomic progress. In other words, that as we think about trajectories of children, adolescents, young adults moving, you know, from from the early family experiences through school, one essential question is to identify these locations in which it's simply hard to take the next step. And so to be blunt, elite universities are one of those examples. In other words, ambition to an elite university offers lots of stuff to the people that get in. But that can be, that's a bottleneck for people that are not from, from certain families or from certain backgrounds or go to certain schools. And so in thinking about the dynamics of inequality, be it at the national level, the county level, I think focusing on locations in which bottlenecks exist is, is a way of understanding where you get a lot of bang for bucks, so to speak. The related idea that I would put there is to think about the importance of, of quantum effects, nonlinear effects. And so what I mean by that is a lot of policy conventionally is thought about. You say, well, if I were to allocate $1,000 to something, you get some effect. I get $2,000, you get twice the effect, $3,000, three times the effect. In fact, I think there's very strong evidence for many phenomena. You get small effects, small effects, small effect. You have to hit a certain threshold to get something that's, that's significant. Now, I mentioned, again, it's an abstract principle. The way I said it is very intuitive. But that says that maybe in thinking about the allocation of resources, you want to focus though. In other words, you concentrate in a few programs as opposed to spreading them evenly across a lot of admirable programs, simply because there are these quantum leaps, as it were, in the efficacy of the programs. The fourth, the final thing I would say in thinking, kind of, again, very abstractly, is that the determinants of inequality, the determines of disadvantage and, and affluence are recurring at different scales. What I call the traditional way that, that one, a lot of inequality work was thought, was to kind of focus on the family and isolation. You want to know something about parental income, something about parental occupation, something about parental education and ask about how that predicts the issues of offspring. But that's clearly now inadequate. You have to ask different questions. You have to ask questions of the form. What is it we know, not just about the family, but about the residential neighborhood? What do we know about the role of schools? What do we know about this? About categories of people, be it defined by gender, defined by ethnicity. So in other words, you have this complex interplay of influences at different scales. And so part of the policy design question has to do with identifying these sensitive points in these interactions where you can get, you know, a high rate of return. So I made these, and so again, I was trying to give kind of a, kind of a large template as we have this world which has these threshold effects. Things can in some cases be incredibly persistent. In other cases, you have this interplay of social and family factors and you can get a perfect storm that could lead to persistent disadvantage or a different type of perfect storm that leads to persistent advantage. And then the policy question is how do you identify these, these, these locations where the efficacy is particularly high? And so there, I think I would mention, you know, some categories of policies where I think that the empirical evidence is really very strong. And these will be ones that you know. The first example of is early childhood investment. In other words, you know, work, much of it spearheaded at the University of Chicago, is I think demonstrated that the returns on high-quality early childhood investments, programs in which, you know, three to six-year-olds are matched with teachers and with their own parents in terms of interactions, have very large and persistent consequences. And so there's something, Jim Heckman was an Nobel Laureate at Chicago, there is, there's something socially called the Heckman Curve, which is a claim that the rates of return on these investments are very high for early ages. What's going on essentially in this literature is that what's been demonstrated is that these positive, again, it's high-quality early childhood investments have very powerful influences on, on, on personality and both cognitive, on development. In other words, and so you can see the footprints of programs 50 years later. There's data sets, you can actually look at somebody who had a program when they were three years old and see what they're like when they're 53 years old. And without going into all the gory details of how you do the empirical work, the fact is you find demonstrable influences from those types of programs. And so I think the extent to which part of your remit is identifying how to improve educational outcomes for disadvantaged people. Clearly, high-quality early childhood investment is one of these places where a, what I call the quantum investment has very important consequences. And so I, you know, this is a, you know, it's a literature that real, again, those of you that are parents could say, of course, we knew that these things matter. The magnitudes are what the surprise is and the, and the establishment of the, of those, those numbers, I think, is a major social science advance that speaks to persistent inequality. The second type of policy that I think, you know, clearly has to be on the table and is fundamental to the sort of work you think of at a county level, let alone at a national level, is, is, is what Mark alluded to, which is the issue of socioeconomic segregation and isolation. In other words, that in the United States in 2022, there are, you know, these fundamental dimensions along which individuals communities are isolated from one another and experiencing very different phenomena, which matter, or which are determining their kids' future outcomes. So let me just give a few examples of that, very concrete ones. Segregation of the teaching force of the teachers in a school, in other words, having all white teachers in a school has deleterious effects on people of color. There's remarkable evidence now that exposure with single, same, same ethnicity teacher has very, you know, demonstrable persistent effects in terms of future academic performance. Now, understanding the reasons for that's hard. Is it a matter that this is the first teacher that doesn't stereotype the student? Or is it a matter that there's a role model effect? These are not known, but the, the bottom line is that's in the data. And I think that those studies say something very important, which is that in thinking about the composition of instructors, this is a very small example of segregation that matters. A second example is that there's very strong evidence that simply that the economic segregation leads to persistent outcomes. And so the government, the federal government ran a number of programs to actually test this, essentially gave school vouchers, I'm sorry, housing vouchers to disadvantaged families, some of which could move anywhere, other which ones were required to move to lower, low poverty neighborhoods defined in a certain way. You then trace out the effects on the families and you trace out the effects on the kids. As, you know, there's now enough years you can see these things. And these vouchers are associated with substantial improvements in socioeconomic outcomes of children. So you know, in understanding the nature of these programs, it's not a matter that people were moving from, you know, the poorest neighborhoods in Southern California to Beverly Hills. They were moving to simply less disadvantaged neighborhoods, you know, to, to, to say it boldly. But again, you find these very powerful influences. Now, that strikes me as an example. We have many actionable policies. Again, I'm, you know, I'm speaking as somebody who's sitting in a classroom and not even in an office, not, you know, on the front lines the way you are. This is, you know, these are the justifications, for example, for, for mixed income housing requirements. In other words, explicit efforts, as I say, that the development of, of, of new groups of homes have to, have to facilitate people mixing from different income backgrounds. A second example, and you know, this is a standard one, is the, this is the, the problem with many of the zoning restrictions in the United States, you know, the most common one, of course, being that certain neighborhoods cannot have multifamily dwellings, which is a fancy way of saying no apartments, you know, keep up housing prices and the like. But you can go through an entire litany of the ways in which, you know, local, local regulations facilitate economic segregation. Of course, those interact with racial segregation and, and are produced, you know, which is a phenomenon that's distinct in an order of magnitude greater than the economic segregation. But all of that is something that you can, that you can think about in terms of actionable policies. And so I would certainly put all of those on the table. The third set of factors that I think have become increasingly clear is determinants of inequality, again, will not shock you. And what maybe is the shock is the magnitudes of the influences has to do with, with social, with, you know, problems in neighborhoods. Most obviously, one example is simply the heterogeneous lit exposure between neighborhoods that are rich and poor. And in the city of Chicago, you know, again, you know, if you're looking, you know, through neighborhood by neighborhood between black people, blacks and whites. In other words, there's really shocking degrees of, of segregation with respect to environmental hazards. neighborhood by neighborhood between black people, blacks and whites. In other words, it's really shocking degrees of 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 segregation with respect to environmental hazards. And so that clearly, you know, that one, in some sense, you see what the action item is, you have to implement policies that do everything possible to clean outlet. And there's, of course, lots of evidence that, you know, the efforts to do that have had, you know, there's been racial disparities in the uh in the intensity, but that becomes a clear policy. A second example, what I'm saying are kind of, you know, ills of neighborhoods which are damaging to children is, again, there's again, there's very powerful evidence that exposure to violence has catastrophic effects on education. And so one would put that on the table is something that, you know, because is a direct statement about how do you allocate resources to uh to to reduce exposures of violence in certain neighborhoods. Now, that, of course, leads to the flip side of this. The other disaster in many neighborhoods is the red levels of incarceration of people. And so the thing I don't think that criminologists have a, you know, a clear policy about is how do you simultaneously promote diminution of exposure to violence? And address it in ways that also respect the carceral state is causing its own forms of segregation in the sense that people uh it the families in which you have, you know, many fa- family members that are that are incarcerated or isolated and and from others. And so those all strike me as kind of the the sorts of actionable items that I would think that uh the bum wants to think about. Now, going back to what I called the kind of the 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 conceptual template. That I I think, you know, and again, in 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 thinking about, you know, black white inequality, to be very concrete about this, um. The fundamental issues there kind of uh, you know, you are at different levels, one simply moral and other monstrous things happen. And the footprints, the consequence of that are are living with us. The second is a contemporary stuff that's wrong, but I'm just saying they, you know, what what's increasingly clear is that 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 American society does not have self-correction mechanisms built into it. In other words, that there's not that the historical injustices, we observe the rates at which their consequences decay are so slow that they're sitting around today in in ways that are really, really mystifying, not not mystifying, but, you know, morally, you know, profoundly troubling. And so I put all of that on the table is 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 as I said, as a set of, I'll say more, not just metaphors, but heuristics, and that is to think about, you know, the process of of socioeconomic evolution across families between parents, children, grandchildren uh is one that's replete with 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 traps. And so what I mean by a trap is that certain configurations of, you know, of disadvantaged make it really hard for the make the probability that children will be qualitatively better off very low. And as I emphasize, there's another set of traps you have to think about, which is affluence traps, and that is that some families can lock themselves in in such ways that regardless of uh the merits of or the uh uh of their kids, they uh they end up with uh, you know, with with high levels of success. And so for that reason, what I, again, I would just say, I think, as a heuristic is to ask, how do you can concentrate resources in particular pressure points in this evolving socioeconomic system where you have the highest probability of breaking the persistence? And so for me, that's why I emphasize this idea of bottlenecks. In other words, that there's, and this is where, you know, I would urge, I would hope that existing social science can be drawn upon is as possible to think through these and I help identify these particular locations where where the where interventions, actions to try to promote equality will have particularly persistent effects. So that that's pretty much what I wanted to cover. I hope it wasn't too, I I know I talk too fast. I I've have thirty five years of students that have assured me of that, and I apologize. Uh, but I, tho- those were really the ideas I wanted to put on the table, and that was that I think that in contemporary thinking about inequality, um, you know, there are these issues of bottlenecks and like how threshold effects. In other words, there's a need, you know, marginal policies are going to have qualitatively weaker effects than non-marginal policies, and that leads to hard choices as to where to concentrate resources. The second thing to say is, I think that the inner, you know, the the increasing recognition of the social determinants of inequality requires policies that directly address that and be it uh identifying locations where where intense investments can respond to the just the disadvantages that certain communities have experienced, and that's that clearly isn't, there's a prior, there there's a clear uh clear um, you know, argument in that favor. And similarly, I think that just thinking very broadly about the issues of segregation and how racial and economic segregation by implication are inducing segregation with respect to health health hazards. There's, but you know, you have the usual ones, school quality uh and the like, but we also have health hazards, we have differential exposures to violence and differential damages to communities because of uh of of the nature of the current criminal justice system. And so by focusing on how to break those segregation patterns, I think one has roots to uh to facilitate uh reductions of 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 the the unjust inequalities that I started part of my my conversation with. So let me uh, is it, is it, might we stop here and take questions or talk?
Very much appreciate it, Stephen. Yes, thank you so much. Uh, any of the commissioners have questions or comments, please? Oh, Wendy Raymer.
Yes, hi, and I apologize, my camera is not working today, so otherwise I would have been on here um with my attention fully on the discussion at hand. Thank you so much for your presentation. You know, um, as I was listening to you, you know, list, you know, uh, these, you know, particular issue areas and where to concentrate and and it really does cover most of, you know, the social issues of our time. I'm curious, I want to flip it. So have you identified or experienced any policies that um just are useless? You know, I mean, your advice is where we should double down, where we should, you know, identify these bottlenecks. What are you seeing as far as policies in general that really just the the shouldn't be there? Or we should clear that those out so that we do have the resources and detention span to focus on these, you know, most impactful um threshold type solutions?
So I'm not sure I have a good list that that I could, I would identify. I I think there's certain policies that I I'm quite comfortable saying have been profoundly counterproductive, and I mentioned one of them is the is the harshness of criminal penalties. In other words, the level of resources that's involved in incarcerating people and the way that the criminal justice system is 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 addressing uh these types of issues is anybody wants to argue that that this is that, again, I'm not, I'm going beyond ethics, I'm efficiency, it's just a great catastrophic waste of resources uh are going on there. So that's certainly a place where I think I I I would identify that. If you kind of had, you know, a a coterie of economists come in and ask what aspects of uh of various anti-poverty pro policies do we think are badly designed? There would be a set of of suspects there, and in essence, what they would say is that some some of the programs such as Medicaid have have discontinuities in um uh, you know, that kind of the benefits to people that can create disincentives. And and there's some evidence those disincentives matter. The answer, by the way, is not to cut the benefits, the answer is to change the the noxious in the program in such a way that there's a smooth uh change in the benefits as people uh have higher, uh, you know, like income from labor market. So those would be kind of two easy ones that come to it, uh, come into play. But I think that um you know, where what I was trying to emphasize with, obviously, were the cases where I think that there's evidence of the of policies having having a substantial effect.
You mentioned the zoning um, one a little bit, right, about like how certain neighborhoods or certain zoning policies really are just meant to keep certain people in and certain people out. Um, that was, you know, an interesting one to me.
Well, yeah, so that one I was, the policy was efficacious for the their efficacious, they work, but they are leaving to, you know, unjust outcomes. So in that sense, uh, you know, I I'll call that a policy that had a, the intent was not good. Uh, even so, but it worked, but it was not a desirable one.
Yeah, yeah.
Other other questions or cow, uh, commissioner of who who am I saying? Ah. Okay, our other Wendy, we got all our Wendy questions coming, please.
You're being barraged. Um, thank you for laying that out, uh, very comprehensive. I think it's always the combination of, you know, income, education, health, safety, structural racism, you know, we see variations on those themes. So I just, I wondered, you know, in your research or, you know, what you're coming across, are you seeing um really striking two generation policies that offer a lot of promise, right? So folks that become more financially stable allow their kids to become more financially stable, the kids get better education and wealth growths. And so, you know, I wondered, like, two generation, and then it sort of leads me to say, you know, like, are the things that you think actually work really well in pairing together? You get a lot more out of different interventions and programs if they're paired together. And then I would just sort of ask, what surprised you recently and what you've seen that's been extremely effective that you might not have you know, thought about or were not thinking about, you know, from this whole buffet of stuff we need to do?
Well, I I think the two that come to mind is I I was surprised at the magnitude of the effects of of lead and by implication on lead abatement for educational outcomes. In other words, it was one thing to know there's an effect, but the the effects were far stronger than I thought. A second example is a uh uh would be the, I'll I'll give two two related examples. One of them is the effects of uh of the of the initial exposure to a same uh ethnicity uh teacher. In other words, the idea that that would have an effect is obvious, there's clear reasons why you would expect that. The magnitudes were, again, were surprising to me. Here's an example of a program where I was surprised there was an effect and at all. Uh, and there's been a set of interventions at colleges, and what they do in freshman orientation week is they they identify uh students of color, students from maybe first gen, and you have what are called modest interventions, which are some programs where they talk to upperclassmen about the college experience. And uh and the explicit purpose of this is to tell people, tell freshmen who have come in, you belong here. So in other words, you may be at a, you know, you come into an environment, suddenly almost, you know, there are very few people of color here. And you may go into a class and your first grades were not going to be very strong. So the question is, how do you process that? And so here, the serious point is the following, and that is people come from very disparate high schools, and so it's not a shock that if you take certain classes, it's predictive how people do based on who their high school, uh, what where they went. And so what I'm saying is what would appear to be modest interventions in terms of having upperclassmen communicate, you belong here, you're going to succeed. It may be, it's gonna be, it could be rougher for you, it could be a more difficult transition than from people from other backgrounds. Again, those programs have shown, this is the part I was surprised by. It was what, you know, it's a couple of hours in the fresh before freshman year. There was demonstrable evidence that it mattered four to six years later. So the two, you know, how do you measure these things? You sort of ask, what's the probability of graduating in six years? What's the probability you end up in certain, taking certain courses? And what's the grades look like? And so I guess what I'm trying to say is this is an another example, the reason this struck me was it's, again, what did I have in my head? All these things happen your freshman year, why would one thing kind of have a have a persistent effect when there's a million other things that 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 come? Is I was not thinking clearly, and that is that when you have this event, this intervention, it entails all of these things dynamically. So the first time a class doesn't go well, you don't say, it's me, you say, it's hard. So there's a dependence in the choices that adolescents make, that this these interventions revealed, again, I I had a, I made that reason you should I put a different mathematical model in my head of all these processes and made me think that you have this kind of this issue of self-reinforcement, and so you have these locations in development, it can be for adolescents, or it could be for uh college students, or you have to make sure you're getting these positive events happening there, because those are the things that get reinforced. To give a completely different example of an a a program which um um, which I heard a lecture on and uh by a psychologist at Michigan, where she talked about a program that in essence took a a K through eight school and took students that were four years behind, I'm, these are, you know, qualitatively four years behind on reading and assigned them to be tutors to kindergartners and reading. And the scores of the tutors went up. Now, there was nothing for them to learn, so even if they were thirteen at their nine year old level, two to a five year old doesn't help in terms of the material. So why would they, why would they, why did the uh scores go up for the people that were behind? It was the first time anybody said, you're a good reader, you have something to offer other people. And so again, the reason I'm kind of going off on this route is I think one of the key things in thinking about these these dynamical processes is that as we're thinking about children and adolescents, this company, these positive and negative reinforcements are extremely powerful. And so interventions that add these positive uh these positive events create the virtuous circle and have these longer consequences. I would definitely put that on the table.
Thank you. Commissioner Austin?
Yes, I was just going back to your opening comments, Dr. Durlough, and you talked about uh some of the learnings and readings you all had around reparations. I was curious to know what some of those uh learnings were and what you might have to offer. I'm thinking more specifically, for example, the uh program implemented in Evanston has come under quite a bit of controversy about, first of all, whether it is or isn't accurate in terms of uh reparations as as defined by many addressing the issues of those directly descended of of slavery versus whether it's just a number of different social interventions that are more contemporary in in their impacts but actually have nothing to do with the longer term arc of uh social inequality. So just interested in some of your is and comments on on that.
So so I guess I would step, uh, I I think you actually hit what is a fundamental issue, and it was a little bit of what, even though I didn't, wasn't explicit about it, is in thinking about reparations, there's the, you know, there's two normative, are two dimensions, there's many ethical dimensions, but two people is the direct re is redress of wrongs in other, and so um, you know, that you identify a community, a group of people that have been wronged, and you ask, how do you, how do you respond to that? A second is to say, there's a community that was grievously wronged, and as a result of the structures in society, the the consequence of the wrongs are still here. And that's more the idea of of structural discrimination, structural racism. And my focus has been thinking about reparations as ways to address the systemic problem as uh of that that these wrongs didn't, they live forever. And so what do I mean by that? You you know, part of the background, obviously, to reparations is the fact that black white wealth disparities are orders of, it's an order of magnitude bigger than black white income inequality. And so in understanding those mechanisms, that's where the you you have these the the this this deep path dependence. And so an easy example is is land ownership. I mean, it wasn't just the fact that there was no land redistribution in eighteen sixty five and reconstruction. It was a set of discriminatory acts that um that denied African Americans opportunities to own land. And so if one, if on that focus, that kind of becomes direct, you would set up policies that are directly going to promote a re-equalization there. In other cases, I think that uh, you know, and and I'm sorry if I'm rambling, I'm saying that those are ones where you could sort of say, here's the direct set of policies, here's the direct consequence, here's the direct thing to reverse. A different thing to say is that in in a society, there are all these acts of discrimination that don't go rectified. And all of these, and acts of discrimination have these complicated rippling consequences throughout communities. And so an easy example of that is every time an African American employees denied a job or potential employee doesn't get a job because they're discriminated against, they're harmed, but so is their family, and so is everybody they know, because that's how information about labor market opportunities diffuse. And so what David McMillan and I have been trying to push is this idea that the A way to, again, I want to be clear, you know, he gets more credit than I do on most of this, and he's also working with Sandy Darity on other dimensions of this, and so I want you know, the the attributions to be appropriate. A key factor in thinking about this is the extent to which we think of reparations is a response to the fact our society didn't have it in it to correct all these wrongs for the last hundred and fifty, sixty years. And that's different than saying that you identify the individual persons from this event were harmed. So again, I, when I say, yeah, quite one acquaintance in Evanston is somebody have an ancestor that was specifically discriminated against in Evanston. And that and that has to do with what I call the direct compensatory issue. The second issue, type of ethics on discrimination is, uh, it has to do with the the system is the product of of accumulation of wrongs and didn't address them. And if you'll forgive me giving some a political overtone to this, one type has to do with guilt and the other has to do with shame. In other words, it's one thing to identify matching victim, you know, wrongdoers and victims. That's the guilt side. The shame side is the society didn't, regardless of doing the matching, didn't address the wrongs. And and, you know, as you, in in trying to build political consensus, I think it's useful to distinguish those. And, and, you know, as you, in, in trying to build political consensus, I think it's useful to distinguish those in the way that one argues for the policies. So I hope that was somewhat responsive to what you're asking.
Yes, I, I, I think some of this, particularly looking at those two, uh, particular dimensions and then raising the question, let's say, for example, from the standpoint of, of, of this commission, what then might we have or, or consider at our disposal? In, in terms of, uh, I don't want to just say mitigating, but you know, trying to dismantle uh, those type of in, in inequities once, once identified. Or all of those different, uh, socioeconomic determinants, bottlenecks that you
Yeah. And so that's why I wanted to say that, at least my, my attempt to formulate the arguments on reparations and said these bottlenecks, these traps are there. And society has an absolute obligation to break them.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Males?
Thank you, uh, Mark, very much. Uh, Professor, this is, uh, touching on so much of my current work, and I do not mean this as a commercial, but I did get my doctorate at the University of Chicago, I think, before you got yours, I think. But, uh, none of my work today is for the University of Chicago, but rather for an organization called the Discovery Partners Institute, which is part of the U of I system. Uh, in that lies much of what you talked about in our work, teach the student, teach the teacher, and we're talking about for grades four through fourteen probably, and it is also in terms of teaching the teacher, we're, uh, getting teachers certified in data and computer sciences in the public schools who look like the kids that they teach. Because if we're going to grab what the future of, uh, many work, uh, enterprises will be, it will be technical. It'll be, uh, somewhat, uh, based in coding, computer science, these are not jobs, these are careers. And in order to do that, the recruitment of teachers requires that those teachers take time from their teaching daily responsibilities. And these are going to be funded for them almost all so that they can do the fifteen-month asynchronous learning and become certified in the state of Illinois. That means they're teaching, one teacher who gets certified is probably touching, uh, you know, sixty lives uh, when they go back in the classroom. And this, you multiply that times the hundreds of people that they'll touch when, once we get twenty and fifty teachers certified. So they are teaching fourth graders, and that's the second point you made. To give people role models, examples, maybe not mentors, but you never know what can come out of a relationship. The extraordinary work of the DPI is, I guess, unique in that it, it stretches statewide. It doesn't, uh, limit itself to the South Side of Chicago, but includes that. And I do want to put a plug in for, um, our member commissioner, Soshi Flores, the incredible commitment of the Office of the President and the Bureau of Economic Development to help us connect with, I think, what is the most uniquely qualified person in the county, the president, who are school, former schoolteacher, who can help us all touch the lives of teachers because she was one. And, uh, Soshi, thank you for all the connections you've made for the DPI. And thank you for this commercial. It's like, it, it's an amazing thing that you're doing and you're talking about, and we're living it. Uh, it's happening right now, and I'm happy to send you a link and introduce.
I, I would, I would very much like to see that. I mean, it's, um, it, it's moving to know that you're about this program. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. Commissioner De Laurentis. You're on mute.
Hi, thank you. Apologize for that. Uh, I am Christie De Laurentis. I represent the South Suburban Mayor's and Managers Association, which is forty-five member municipalities in the South Suburbs. Many of them are the most resource-strept communities in the state of Illinois, and many of them are, are, uh, recognized as some of the most challenging in the entire country. So I'm really interested in this topic, and one of the things that I wanted to mention to you and to this body is that we, we as an organization has sort of, um, tried to develop in advance some policies related to, uh, really the socioeconomic isolation, the segregation that you identified. And what we've started to say is that in addition to this, um, recognized, you know, your future shouldn't be determined, uh, upon, you know, the place of your birth or your current zip code. But really also, we're expanding that to also say, your, your, your effective tax rate. Because what we see is in areas that have high tax rates, it's because there's been systemic, you know, structural racism, commercial redlining, loss of, uh, uh, school funding, all these kind of cyclical events that are creating uh, areas of isolation and, um, and, uh, challenge. So we're really focused on that and trying to advance strategies that address that, the tax rates, we're working on a lot on tax policy. And, um, I see there is an opportunity, particularly coming out of post, you know, pandemic or the pandemic, with this notion of Build Back Better, it's really trying to put the resources where they're most needed. And I know the county's been very committed to that, a huge partner of ours, uh, really through the leadership of President Preckwinkle. But what I would say, it's, um, you know, small wins that we're hoping, you know, creates some momentum. And I just welcome the comments that you have about that.
Well, I don't think I have much more to say than that's was wonderful to hear. I mean, to be honest, I, I'm, I'm I'm very moved by what the programs that you guys have been describing. You know, it's easy for me to, I have some, you know, theory in my head, but you're, you're on the front lines, you're actually addressing these things. It's, it's fantastic. And the, um, the issue of the taxes, I guess my colleague Chris Berry has worked on a related issue, which is injustices in the assessment rates uh, across, across neighborhoods where, um, the more affluent were benefiting from, uh, from the, the, the way the valuations are, were done. But I think that that's, you brought up is extremely important. The only thing I would add to it is it also indicates why some of the measures that are used for, um, talk about inequality are, are inadequate. So what I mean by that is, i- if you just look at kind of per pupil expenditure as the metric for inequality, there's very large disparities. There, there's state specifics. So Texas is much higher, for example, in other states, because there's little, there, there isn't redistribution or state-level programs augmenting it. What I'm trying to say is that we have to actually look at the amount of money, you have to look at what's being spent on. And so if schools have to spend a lot of their resources on, I'll say, protection because of, uh, you know, of, of, of crime and things, that doesn't go to books. And so part of what I heard from you was that you have to, we have to think more comprehensively about school resources at two levels. One of them is kind of the disparities in who's generating them and how hard it is. And the second, what I'm throwing in as the addendum to that is, is what the allocations are. And so what I'll call these, these inequalities in neighborhoods, they also distort the, uh, you know, the capacity to convert the resources of the schools into, into, into certain things.
I'll just add to that because I'm sitting, uh, with, uh, Commissioner Killen here on the same call. But a lot of the challenge too is that if there's lack of resources going in, there's uh, not the infrastructure and trans, you know, there's, uh, transportation deserts and all of that. So, yeah, it's very cyclical and it means that there's less jobs and less, you know, employment at the neighborhood level. So certainly something that we're challenged by, and I'm always, uh, appreciative of all the thoughtful gleanings and, uh, lessons learned from colleagues here. So thank you for your comments today.
No, thank you, of course.
Thanks to both of you. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Well, I, I have a few, Vice Chairman, just before you go, you always have such in-depth questions, but I just want to make a really quick observation. Um, I think one of, uh, a great takeaway today, especially, especially when we're talking about the socioeconomic segregation um, is we have the Cook County Land Bank, and I think that I, we, we've tried, um, you know, to figure out how we, uh, fit as a commission. And I, um, was made aware that on Tuesday, there, there seems to have been a new selection for a new executive director of the land bank. And I'm hoping that at some opportunity, you know, we'll have opportunities in the future to be able to invite uh, Jessica Cafrey, um, who has been with the, uh, in, in real estate in the county, um, and, and now potentially going to be handling as an executive director to the land bank to really address this, because as we see that the land bank is a great asset to be able to get properties back in the tax row, I also think it's a great opportunity to make sure that, you know, there is that exposure and, um, and we work towards that accessibility, um, for individuals to create more equity. Um, and I think just some of the things that were highlighted in regards to, uh, the results and the impact that it could cause in the long term, not only obviously in, in, in the classroom, but you know, based on what Christie was saying about, you know, where, where you grow up, where, where your zip code is and and just like the, the impact of what that, um, can be, I think that it's extremely important for us to look for these opportunities. And I, I look forward to, uh, continuing this conversation because I think that there is a lot to unpack and there's a lot of initiatives that we can definitely play a very important role in. So I just wanted to make that observation. Thank you, Vice Chair. I, I do see Superintendent Killen, um,
Yes, please, Commissioner Killen, if you'd be so kind.
Yes, thank you. Wonderful presentation. And as we're, you know, just thinking about the different ways here in county government, so I run Cook County's Transportation Group, how we can help address inequities, where you might think transportation's off to the side. Um, conversations that actually started here, um, you know, Commission of Social Innovation, in conjunction with some of our mobility work that we were doing in the Southland, we created the, the Fair Transit pilot. So this is where we talk about, you know, zip codes, where you're born. You know, how should that, how should that dictate your future? But more importantly, how do we create access to opportunity? And Christie, thank you for kind of queuing me up a little bit on this one. But that's where I say, we're looking at how uh, transit fare policy can have impacts on jobs that one can attain. And it also comes back to not just how we work with transit service providers to provide that reduced fare, where Cook County is providing the offset to that fare, so you can have a more convenient, more accessible transit route to your job, but how we can also bring that infrastructure investment back into communities, that's not just giving access and reduce fair to let you board, or maybe take a Metro train instead of taking a pace to CTA, train to CTA bus to get you there more efficiently and put those jobs within reach. But how we also need to look at the flip side of that and make investments in communities, as Christie was saying, making sure we're addressing the tax implications, but bringing those jobs closer to home to help, to help, um, eradicate some of those inequities that occur today to have a four-hour back-and-forth commute just to have a good paying job.
Any, uh, a, any reaction to that, Stephen?
Well, I'm, I'm, it was more, I just was reflecting on it. There was an old idea, an older idea in the inequality literature, something called spatial mismatch. And that is that, uh, the relationship where we people live and where their jobs are could create a lot of inequities because of transportation costs. And so um, you're, you're addressing that, but you brought, it's, I'd say you're directly addressing that, because you're asking the question of how do you facilitate the capacity of, uh, of, of people to, actually, I'll say integrate themselves in, in beyond the, the, at where you live. And so what I mean by that is one question has got to work, you know, segregation at the level of residence. Another is segregation with respect to workplace. And so part of what you're addressing is your, the possibility of, of the one doesn't entail the other. But the other thing you brought up that I was, I was, you know, again, was just pro, was thinking about was the issue of what people bring back. In other words, it's not just a matter that you go off to the job, you come back and, and nothing matters. The point is that's bringing things to the community, and that's a little bit what I was referring to when I said that, uh, yeah, in thinking about the process of, of, of labor market success, it's very driven by social networks. Opportunities for jobs, people communicate them to the people they know. And so that's another example where if you, if you integrate, that you break the, the, the labor, the segregation in terms of where people work, by implication, that goes back to the community and breaks segregation in the, uh, in the information flows. And so that, that, that was the thing that I was just, just kind of processing that you were talking. So it's very interesting.
Well, thank you. Um, yes, I, um, I, I just have, um, not so much a question, although I'll end with a question, uh, but an observation, and that is uh, Stephen, as you and I were speaking, speaking before this meeting, and we've talked over the last few weeks, you know, it occurred to me how your work would intersect with the, um, social policy recommendations that are being incubated in various of our working groups. And, uh, so as I hear you today and I hear a number of the commissioners speak, I see, um, through lines and cross-currents that go essentially through many or most of our working groups. Uh, and, and I'll just check them off to give you how I'm thinking about this. So we have a, a working group on community investment vehicles, and obviously you're talking about investment and disinvestment. Uh, we have a working group on diverse talent pipelines. We're talking about diversity and inclusion, of course. Uh, we have a working group on reparations, which Commissioner Austin mentioned and you mentioned. Uh, we have a working group on crime and criminal justice, uh, which is chaired by Commissioner Austin. Um, and, um, it, it, it seems to me that, um, as we kind of wind down for the year and look forward to the new year, where hopefully some of the work we've in, invested in over this year will manifest itself in policies that actually are brought to the county board and where they support those policies. Um, you would be a wonderful resource for us. I know you sell yourself short, you're enormously humble, enormously gifted, and, um, i- is kind of a a, a, an academic or a theoretical guy, but in reality, you have such extraordinary practical knowledge that could help inform our work in, in a way that is, uh, different from, and in some ways, um, essential from a more holistic point of view, as we look at our various working groups and how, how they, um, how they reveal their work product. So the question is this, would, would you be willing to serve, uh, just kind of ad hoc? Uh, as working groups, uh, may wish to tap into your expertise and your, your knowledge, because it seems to me when we talk about a commission on social innovation, uh, we might very well have labeled it in a way more compatible with your field of, fields of study. And, uh, so I think there is great, uh, compatibility between your research, your writings, your teaching, your, 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 um, thought leadership as a public intellectual and the work that we're seeking to accomplish here. So I, I, I would ask if you might be willing to be imposed upon, uh, from time to time, as the working groups undertake their, their jobs as commissioners. Is, is that something you might entertain?
Well, it's not an imposition. I'd love to do it. Okay. I, I, I learned things from this conversation today. I mean, you, you've seen, I was taking notes. It wasn't, uh, there was a reason for it. You were describing policies, some of them I had to know about, and other ones that made me think differently. This, you know, just to give that one example, the, the issue about the spatial mismatch, this, when you were describing it, it made me think about a different question. So this is not a matter of I get, I would benefit from itself, you know, at the personal level, but more importantly, you're, you're doing so important. If I could do any marginal benefit to that, obviously I want to do that.
Well, it's, it's very kind of you, and again, uh, further evidence of your humility and, uh, and, and, and testament to your extraordinary leadership. So, uh, thank you for that. And, um, you know, I think we've all benefited enormously from your contribution today and look forward to collaborating with you going forward as our work continues to unfold. And, you know, as you see, this is an all-hands-on-deck effort. Uh, each of us has a specific area of expertise or interest, but all of us are broadly interested in driving social change. And, uh, together collectively, uh, we're able to deliver more than any one of us individually might. So uh, your, your contributions here are very welcome, and, uh, we're very grateful for what you've, uh, what you've offered.
It's very flattering and kind. Thank you.
Very kind of you. So, um, and, and, uh, Stephen, as we now kind of move forward with the balance of the meeting, uh, again, thank you so much for what you've already contributed. You're more than welcome to stick around to hear the balance of this if you want to take off and do other things. We would fully understand.
I, I, of course, we have family obligations, but, uh, I would love to have the opportunity to interact again, and, and I'm grateful that I had a chance to meet you and
You undoubtedly will have that opportunity and we will have that privilege. So thanks again and appreciate your being with us. And thanks for all your good work.
Thank you. Take care, everybody. Okay.
So, uh, Commissioner and I, unless you have a different preference, I, I think what I would suggest at this point is we, uh, go through the working groups to see if there are reports available today. Again, recognizing that we're going to be looking for much more uh, substantive contributions at the December meeting. Is, is that okay with you that we move in that direction?
Absolutely. I think that's the next item on the agenda. So.
Very much appreciate that. So, uh, as we, as we move forward, uh, the Community Investment Vehicle Group and, uh, Commissioner Raymer, if you have something to offer in that department, we'd love to hear from you. If you're, if you're still around. I think you may have departed. And I know.
She signed out that she was gone.
Yeah, Commissioner Freeman was unable to attend today. And diverse talent pipelines, Commissioner Aglop, I don't think is here. Is there someone speaking for that working group? Not hearing anyone. The unutilized church property, former Commissioner Yonan that chaired that group, and I don't know that we've named someone to succeed him, and I don't know if there's anyone specifically working on that effort, but if there is, would love to hear from such person.
Actually, SSMA was involved in that committee, and I have had some preliminary meetings with municipal representatives, so trying to ascertain whether or not this is an issue that's kind of bubbling up within various communities as not-for-profits. You know, are challenged with with their properties or whether or not the. The Catholic churches have, you know, identified any surplus parcels. So we've gotten some preliminary information. It's not pervasive, but we are trying to ascertain what. Kind of challenge this presents going forward. So continue to have some discussion about that.
Reddison, if I can be of any help to you, especially between now and December, to flesh any of that out, so we have something to work with. As we wind down the year, I'd be happy to help in any way I can. I appreciate your effort. Appreciate your stepping up. And the Working Group on Reparations, which is chaired by Commissioner Anderson, I don't believe he is here this evening. Is there someone working on that? Effort? If not, we'll we'll pass over that. Commissioner Killen, electric vehicles.
Yes, so I think I'm actually a one-woman band on on this work group. So we're actually looking at just in our own work here, county transportation, the work that the state is doing, what CMAP is doing, but really trying to look at that relationship between opportunity and land use and looking at areas of high concentration of freight activity and where we see. Pop EJ populations, looking at Justice Forty Initiative, where there might be certain parcels open for development that we may want to work with communities on electric fleet opportunities. So that is, we're actually undertaking some work internal to the department on this right now. So it's trying to bring together the work of all the collective groups on the topic, but it's still very early.
Very much appreciate that, and I appreciate your carrying this solo for the moment. Again, same offer applies to you. If I can be of any help in moving this along, please feel free to call on me, and I'll be happy to do whatever I can. And thanks thanks for your your contribution. And Commissioner Austin, the Crime and Criminal Justice Working Group, if you have something to tell us, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I don't have anything new other than my ongoing appeal for folks to put their their hands up. I know Wendy graciously. Reached out, and we talked about some ideas. I have been collecting some. Literature that I'm going to try to work to summarize and and make available as some. Starting points in terms of conversation and and ideas, but given your. Thrust for the December meeting, I guess I better turn up the heat on.
Well, that was that was what I was hoping might be the reaction, and I appreciate that. And again, if I could be helpful to you in moving this along, please let me know, and I'd be delighted to do that. Obviously, it's an extremely important subject matter for the commission. Thank you for your effort. And finally, the Industrial Policy Working Group, Commissioner Thomas, if you have something to report, we'd love to hear about it.
Sure. Hi, everyone. We had our first meeting. The work group is so far made up of Commissioner Cooley and myself, Commissioner Malone, hopefully will join us, and of course, Commissioner Lane, you will. Vice Chair Lane, you are interested in staying connected. So we had our first meeting. Our second meeting will be November eighteenth. Probably two P M. If anybody is interested, please reach out to me. There's a couple of you that I see on the screen that I'm going to reach out to with some specific questions. We just started with some brainstorming about what could a possible sort of policy structure look like that would make sense coming out of the work group and then would come to the commission. So very early, we're going to have our second meeting. We will have something substantive for the December meeting. It might not be as substantive as you imagine after a couple of meetings, but we will have something substantive. Looking forward to talking more about that.
We would welcome that, Commissioner Thomas. Thank you. And I would also like to take a cue from what you said beyond that, but more procedurally, and that is, as you look at folks on the screen. Chairs of the working, other working groups, nothing prevents you from tapping the shoulders of anybody you see or anyone else who's on the commission that isn't here right now, if you think they might add value to your work. Because again, this is all hands on deck, and all of us together are smarter than any one, two, three, four, or five of us. So please feel unconstrained in reaching out to others who may. Contributes to to your work. So thank you for that. And Madam Chair, I think that is the conclusion of the working group reports.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lane. So I I know that we. We're going to be discussing if there's any announcements. I I don't think necessarily we have all of the details for the December, but we'll make sure to keep you all updated. We're hoping to do it in person. We are confirming the 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 office. I'm sorry, the the boardroom, so that everybody is able to be there. So we will be in close communication with you all. So that we can move forward in accordance to OMA. And we will make sure that, you know, if 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 anybody has any specific. Issues getting there that we'll 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 maybe, you know, square that away early on. So I don't know. I'll open it up for any additional comments or any additional announcements. You know, I'm I'm really excited that we are coming to to close in the first year of of feeling of of going back to the the regular. You know, monthly meetings and having so many great presentations and so many discussions that are happening. So I think I'm excited for, you know, what's next for the commission. So I I guess I'll open it up again for any final comments or any announcements from any of the members.
I actually had something that occurred to me. I just wanted to make sure the word was getting out. That the Illinois Department of Human Services just announced. Capital Assistance Program for nonprofits that are providing a range of human services, so for their maybe capital assistance needs. So I'll forward that on in case people haven't seen that. I just want to make sure the word gets out because there are so many organizations that own their buildings or building out and just may not be in that network to hear about it. So I'll forward that.
Thank you, Carrie. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, so I will then entertain a motion to adjourn. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please?
A second.
Okay, I didn't catch the seconder. Was it?
I think you had a few.
All right. So I I didn't hear who. Anybody want to just quickly?
I'll second.
So get in, Harry Austin. Okay, all those in favor of a German say aye.
Aye.
Those guys have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody stay safe, be well.
Good program today. Thanks, everybody.